All right, we're ready. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2016, and we'll start with roll call.
Ali Nichols.
Here.
Amy Seboth Wilson.
Here.
Catherine Westerby.
Here.
Barbara Das.
Here.
Don Francis.
Here.
Tom Knoll.
Here.
And Ken Killian.
Here.
The first item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding zoning ordinance 1614 repealing and recreating section 2211 signs and portions of 2206 specific standards. And we'll start with staff presentation.
Okay, the changes that were being considered tonight are regarding signage. The 2211 is the actual signage portion of the zoning ordinance. The other section is related to home occupations, 2206, and that I included that just because there's some language in there regarding allowable signage for home occupations. And it's not very consistent right now, so I'm proposing some changes to make it consistent with the uses that are allowed in a residential area. Most of the other changes are basically directed at temporary signage and the requirements and regulations for temporary signage. So if you look through the zoning ordinance, there's kind of a number of changes that have been made that are highlighted in one copy that you got, and the other one is kind of a copy. It's a little easier to read, but it doesn't highlight all the changes. But we added a number of definitions to the ordinance specifically related to temporary signage, so it's a little clearer as to what signs are considered temporary signs, so they would fall under that category. We did come up with a modification to the definition of what a sign is itself. The existing one is very inclusive, and after discussions with the plan commission, we narrowed it down a little bit. That's on page five, basically to limit it to objects or items that have words, letters, numbers, symbols, or graphics, which was not in there before. So it's a little bit less inclusive, but it still includes a variety of items that would be considered signage. We took all the language or reference to temporary signage that was previously in each individual zoning district, took all that and put it into a new section specifically related to temporary signs, and that's where most of the changes are being proposed. So in the marked-up copy, that starts on page 18, it would be section H. So that is set up as far as residential and non-residential districts, and then within each one of those, it's temporary signage that's allowed without a permit, and then signage that requires a permit. So it's kind of structured as most of the language is kind of the larger general criteria, they have to maintain the signage, it has to be limited to their property, properly maintained, et cetera. It can't include any electrical, mechanical, video device. Has to be limited to basically a use that's allowed on that property, so you don't have billboards popping up all over through residential areas. Can't injure, so that type of thing. The other thing, it tries to put some limits on how soon it can go up and how long it can go up. So for instance, in the residential area, not more than five days before whatever event the sign is advertising, or two days after. And then eventually, essentially, they get 16 square feet without a permit. If they want to get more than that, then that's when the permit would be required. For the residential area, they're saying, and this was a recommendation from the plan commission, not, no individual sign should be larger than nine square feet. And then like I mentioned, if they want more than that 16 square feet, then they would get a permit. That permit would give them an additional 12 square feet of sign area, and that can be one sign or multiple smaller signs, gives them a little bit of flexibility. That permit would give them that additional signage for 14 days and up to four per year in the residential area. And then there is a maximum kind of total based on the size of the property. So the non-residential would be structured basically the same, the same way. Again, they get 16 square feet without a permit. If they want to go beyond that, they can get a permit for that, for an additional 16 square feet, as proposed. Again, it would be for 14 days and then up to four times per year. There's an additional category in the non-residential for special events, that would be a grand opening or something major that kind of gives them unlimited quantity of signs, number of signs, for 30 days and then two of those events per year. And again, there's a maximum on the area, except for the special event, based on the size of the property. So those are generally the changes that are being proposed. The plan commission, when I presented this to the plan commission, I tried to give them kind of a high, medium, and low options as far as the area and the duration, and then they kind of discussed it and came up with the recommendations that are in front of you. So that, as it's presented to you is what the plan commission is recommending for approval, and staff would also recommend approval. The other change that we would like to have considered is regarding the permit fees for signage. Right now, we just have, you know, the general's permit for all signage, and it's really written more for the permanent signs because of the minimum fee is $50, which is by all counts, I think everybody's in agreement, is excessive for a simple temporary signs. So what we're proposing is have basically two categories, permanent signage, which would keep the existing language we have now, but then the temporary signage would have a lesser fee amount. The plan commission's recommending $10 for a residential permit. The additional, standard additional business signs would be $10, and then the special event sign permit would be $25. And I think that's all I've got. The only thing else that I guess I should mention is since this latest version went out, we did try to redistribute it again, and the only feedback that I received was from one business owner who thought the 16 square feet without a permit was too small. He was suggesting 32 square feet, and I, that's an interesting number because that was one of the options that the plan commission did consider. They talked about all different allowable areas, and 32 square feet, I remember, was mentioned, but there was some concern that that might be a little bit too much, so they settled back on 16. But obviously, we can put it wherever you'd like. They were trying to find kind of that middle ground of allowing some signage, but not having too much signage. So, any questions?
Questions from the council right now?
I have one question, first of all. As far as the business people, did they review it as a committee or individuals or what? What was the feedback from business? Because I, it was the business people that complained about this and said that we might be, as council, not business-friendly.
They, they were provided copies on multiple occasions through the Chamber of Commerce and the Main Street program. There was one group meeting that I attended early on in the process that had four or five businesses represented. There were a couple of follow-up meetings after that, and each one of those, we never had more than one business owner attend.
Okay, so they've had the opportunity to speak up.
Right, and I did have other business owners stop in to talk to me, but mostly, that was at the very beginning, when I was starting the work. The only additional feedback, as I mentioned, was that one comment.
Then the next question is, as far as the church sign, that was a banner.
Correct.
Can that banner be displayed as they did?
That would be considered a temporary sign, and they would be allowed to have 16 square feet, so I don't know the exact size of that banner, but if it's 16 square feet or less...
Something could be displayed.
Correct.
But according to what you gave us here, we cannot say as to what the content will be.
Correct.
Okay. And then my other, my last question is signage on public light poles such as beer signs, are those acceptable yet?
Anything within the street right-of-way would not be allowed, regardless of the content.
So, Anna, if a light, if a light post, a street light is in the right-of-way, it can't be displayed on?
It would specifically have to be approved by the council.
Approved by the council.
Right.
We've seen that, beer signs on streetlights, so those are not allowable.
Yeah, no, the one, the one instance that I'm aware of was on streetlights, but it was on parking lot lights, that would be private. So there may be some instances where they could still have them on the lights, but as far as a public streetlight, they would not be allowed.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Other questions, anyone? Just to go through the form, applicant statement would be the next category, obviously, the city is the applicant. Public statements in favor or against or in general, we have no requests this evening for anyone to speak. Go back then to council discussion. Any other questions for staff about this proposed sign ordinance? Don?
Can you describe the process of enforcing?
As a zoning violation, we would typically, if we encounter either through a complaint or we, you know, view it ourselves, we would notify the property owner and say that, you know, you've got a violation here, and give them a period of time to correct it. And then if that is not corrected, then the enforcement would be a citation.
Any other comments or questions?
I want to thank Joel for making the changes that I asked for at the last meeting. Thank you.
Sure.
And I think we had a very good discussion twice at the plan commission, and really, I think, came up with some solutions that I feel were fair for the business owners and also for the citizens of the community, so.
And I appreciate that it became more readable, temporary versus, so. I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a common council action?
I make a motion we adopt zoning ordinance 1614 repealing and recreating section 2211 signs and portions of 2206 relative to specific standards.
That includes also the fee, permit fee? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, one of the two.
Ken can have it.
Josh, Josh.
I have Seboth down.
Okay. All right, we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. A is council minutes from the August 9th meeting, B is payment of bills, C, appointments to boards and commissions, and I have one this evening, to the plan commission for a term until 5/1 of 17, Joyce Boss. D is licenses, change of agent for Walmart stores, East LP Bentonville, Arizona. Langen Decker is the agent now. One-year and two-year operator license to sell and serve alcohol, those were in your packet. Permits, a run-walk permit to Suicide Prevention Resource Center for Ben's Hope on September 24th. Street closing permits, Hickory Street from Greenwood Avenue to Pine Street for the Newman Olympics on September 30th, and J., Irene, and Hickory Streets for the Homecoming Parade staging area on October 15th. There are motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Please let me yourself to more than, no more than five minutes, and we have had one person asked to speak, Arlene Dorsey on the Stone Cottage.
Arlene Dorsey, sis, 130 North Hickory Street. Once again, I'm here for the Stone Cottage. We have an event coming up on Friday, and we are going to try to have an outdoor thing for people can come and watch a film. And so we're trying it. It's going to be so that parents and children will have a nice day or evening, and hopefully it's not raining. And it'll start at eight o'clock, and we ask everybody to come, and I'll pass this around so you can see what we have, very simple. Any questions? I don't know of any place that we've done this for quite a while, so it's something new that we're trying. We're hoping to get people to come out and just have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the reports in the packet. Brown Tree Gallery Board, Westerby?
I do want to note that this Sunday, the Hilden Quilt Society Club project is closing, or you need to get there by the 20th, this see more than 40 handmade quilts, really amazing craft work.
They are amazing. I've seen the exhibit, and they are absolutely beautiful. Commission on Aging, Westerby?
So tomorrow is the senior picnic, and doors open at 4:00 PM at the Community Evangelical Church, which is at 300 Pioneer Road, so is that also happening?
Great. Board of Appeals, zoning? Knoll?
None.
Library Board, Westerby?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Other reports, the downtown parking task force, the minutes were in the packet, I don't know that there's anything to add to that, so.
I have questions.
Okay.
Let's see, who's here for committee? Emma and the city manager. On page two, brainstorm methods, A, 4A, I'm just quizzing here, suggested a questionnaire to business owners and tenants. Who are the tenants? Are these the tenants of the businesses or the tenants as far as residents living in apartments?
So the question that had been asked to the task force was how they were going to do outreach, and so they were talking about the tenants of the buildings.
Is there going to be any type of survey as far as who has vehicles, and where do they park those vehicles at, in the evening, or at night, and during the day, as far as downtown business owners and downtown tenants? I'm curious about that. And then there's a comment here about also suggested talking to permanent residents only. Could you interpret that? What is the permanent resident?
So I guess, two items was about this, one about the survey, and so this task force is just getting started. That was kind of their organizational meeting. We had another meeting last night, which was more educational, so they're just embarking on their work, and they have not talked about a survey at this time. With respect to the terminology there, I think the intent, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Emma, but I think the intent was that as opposed to more transient residents, there are some residents or some perhaps business owners that live above their buildings, so owner residents as opposed to apartment residents.
Well, I would certainly suggest a survey as far as finding out where the vehicles are parking, as far as those that park downtown, night and during the day. See what's being used as far as city lots. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on that? All right, we're going to go on then to the action item, resolution 1618 approving the Platteville Main Street Inc. wireless project. Not sure if any staff member wants to talk about this, or Main Street Director? I think it's going to be the Main Street Director.
No, I think we had had on the, on the agenda item, it actually says that the Main Street Director will speak to the item.
My name is Jack Ludkey. I'm the executive director for the Platteville Main Street program, and I recommend that you do, do pass the resolution as a first step. I just wanted to point out a couple of things before I take questions. I was asked last time to inquire about some of the other communities that have outside wiring, and I did that, and that brought me to the understanding that I had given you misinformation last time. The Watertown I was discussing two weeks ago is actually in New York. When I talk to our Watertown person, they don't have free outside Wi-Fi. However, I did talk to Two Rivers, which has had it for a number of years, and it's working very well for them. I did talk to Whitewater, that has just recently provided free Wi-Fi in an area of the city, covering, I believe, mostly their park area, not totally downtown, but their next step is to bring it into the downtown area, and that's under discussion right now. Kenosha has just implemented a system of free Wi-Fi, and also West Alice. And by talking to these individuals and looking at their websites, we also discovered that there will be things in place for usage of the Wi-Fi, like someone here mentioned timing out. It will be timed out after a period of probably two hours, and then they will have to, you know, go back into it. It's similar to what most businesses use to move traffic along out of the coffee shop or out of Drifless Market. We also found out that there is an agreement normally with this, that persons, when they sign in, will have to agree to the usage, and that they will not be able to go on sites that should not be on the public access. So again, I am asking that you pass the resolution, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that I'm able to.
All right, I don't think so. There are motion.
I move to approve.
A second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We'll move forward with this, and hopefully by the end of September, we'll have first access point up. Thank you.
Thanks for doing such great services.
All right, that is the only action item we have this evening, so we're going to go on to information and discussion, stormwater management plan, which is this nice pack et that we have here, Howard. Thank you very much.
Yes, you folks have the abridged version. Here's, here's the full version. Yeah. We've been working on the stormwater management plan in accordance with the requirements of our DNR stormwater permit. Some people know it as a municipal separate storm sewer system, or MS4 permit, and I gave you selected, the base report and selected appendices. It's also on, under concurrent review by the DNR, and we're required to submit it for their review by August 28th, which we have done, and the plan itself must be approved and implemented by February 28th of next year. One of the reasons is that we have three ordinances that will need to be reviewed and approved, illicit discharge and detection elimination ordinance, the construction site erosion and sediment control ordinance, and the post-construction stormwater management ordinance. Of those, right now, we only have construction site erosion ordinance, but it's out of date based on the, the new model ordinance that DNR put together in 2013. So what we're going to end up doing is, we're going to ask you to approve the plan next time, based on, you know, pending the approval of the DNR, and then at that point, we will work on the ordinance changes that need to go into effect to implement this plan. Of note, we have, there is a computer model called Wind Slam that determines the amount of pollution that we discharge. What it shows is that the city with an area of 3,944 acres, including the university and the airport, without any activities or controls, would discharge over 916,000 pounds of solids annually. It translates to 0.116 tons per acre per year. Comparing it to an agricultural community, agriculture, farming is allowed up to five tons per acre per year, or 43 times the amount that we would discharge if we did nothing at all. With the current activities and controls that we have in place, we're, we estimate that we discharge a little over 743,000 pounds, or .094 tons per acre per year, a reduction of 18.93 percent from the base condition. The reason why we do that is because in the permit, by the end of the permit cycle, we are supposed to reduce the solids by 20 percent from the base condition. So right now, we're at 18.93, and we got to get to 20 in the next five to seven, or five to seven years. So we have a number of ways that we can do this. One is we can do the, what some have called the, the hope and pray method. What that means is if we rely on new development coming in that has to meet certain reduction goals, that counts against our, counts towards our goal. So if, what we're saying is if we have 65 acres of development in the next 10 years, we could reach our 20 percent goal because of the amount of reductions that each of the sites on those 65 acres would, would do. If we don't think that we can get 65 acres of new development in the next 10 years, then the other part, the other way of doing this would be to do projects, more stormwater ponds, swales, rain gardens, all sorts of other types of activities to get us to that 20 percent. And one of the appendices that I enclosed, appendix L, had some potential projects with estimated costs that would reach those goals. So at this point, we're asking at the next council meeting that you adopt the preliminary plan pending the approval of, of the DNR, and we will begin work on the ordinance changes.
Questions, anyone, or comments?
I have a question. So this has been to DNR by the 28th, and so they, will they give approval before the next council meeting? Is that expected?
No, this is a, this is a concurrent process at this point. They're doing a review as well. What I'm asking for you to do at the next council meeting is to approve it pending DNR's approval.
But they will have the document already?
Yes, but I don't, I don't believe that they will have it reviewed and approved before the next council meeting. We need to, we need to have it submitted for approval by the end of the month, which we have done so already, and then between us and DNR, we need to approve the plan and implement ordinances by the end of February.
I understand that. Well, I guess my comment is we should have gotten this thing earlier, dated August 15th. Should have had more time to read it, it's, study it, it's 60 pages, I think, roughly. It's close to that. So that's one comment, and then the back page, I was looking at that. So, that's one comment, and then the, the back page, I was looking at that. We've talked about our situation, my situation, my wife and I. We own something next to Harrison Park, and it says a wet pond. We do not favor a wet pond. So, I, I guess I wouldn't want this to go in stating a wet pond will be built on our property.
These...
Is this from the first stormwater management plan that was done maybe ten years ago?
That's, that's where some of it came from, but the issue here is, these are possible projects. Projects would have to be approved by the common council to be implemented. Whether we do a, a project in or on Harrison Park property or privately owned property in that area is, is a council decision. We're saying that that is an option to get us toward our goal. There are other options that we can do that would also help us reach our goal.
As far as Harrison Park, there, you could, you could place something before the start of the tube, underneath the park, or you could place it after. Our property is located after. We're getting the, the debris after it comes out of the tube. But you could catch that debris before it goes into the tube, catch it up at Harrison Street. So, ours is not the only place where something could be built. Well, I'd like to discuss this with you. I think I, I have, I have some ideas as to how this could be made without making a wet pond. So, my question is, you put it in a wet pond, that is not hard and fast?
No, there, there are other ways of doing things in order to reach the twenty percent goal.
That's not the question. The question is, putting it in a wet pond isn't, is necessarily, not necessarily the way to do it for Harrison.
That's...
Yes or no?
That will be a council decision. So, the plan requires that we, that there are just broad options identified for, for reduction, and these are project options. As Howard had stated previously, there is also options related to do nothing and hope. Uh, there is options related to putting more requirements on new development. And so, we'll be starting the process to discuss with the council what options you wanna pursue with respect to how we meet these goals. So, that will be a council decision. And that could be all of these projects, it could be, it could be all these projects, it could be none of these projects.
I have some experience with wet ponds, and some of these turn into be a mess, whereas wet ponds. So, we don't care to have that on our property. Thank you.
Howard, I don't know if this is a question that needs to be addressed now, but on the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, the construction site erosion and sediment control ordinance is required to develop. And regu, some of the questions that are raised are regulation and land and the extraterritorial zone. Does that mean the township also has to do some kind of stormwater management, or what would happen in a case like that? Do you know?
We need to... Watersheds go across municipal boundaries. And so, what we need to do is we need to look and work the best we can within the, within the hydrologic boundaries that may or may not cross into the township in order to identify sources of pollution and, and try to work to minimize those. You know, I understand that that's a political process that has to be worked out in cooperation with the township, and some of that stuff may or may not be possible. We're just gonna have to work as best we can towards some of these issues.
I have a related question, and if it's addressed in the plan somewhere, I'm sorry. I haven't read it all that thoroughly either. You had talked, the last time we met, you had talked about this. You had talked about UW Platteville, and they have their own permit. So, you were talking more with the DNR to figure out how those, their permit and ours interact. Basically, my question is if the university goes above and beyond the requirements, does that count toward ours?
We're still working with the DNR on how that, how that interaction works.
Okay.
So, it's not well-defined as of yet.
Okay. Thank you, Howard.
My, my next question is, is there any funding available for this type of work?
Generally not.
Is this simply an unfunded mandate for the city of Platteville?
Pretty much. It's a, it's a permit requirement, and DNR has basically said that there is little money available for doing this sort of thing. There are, there are grants, matching grants for some projects, for some wet pond work, for some riprapping of, of stream banks and, and different things like that. But those are, those are matching grants. You know, they'll provide up to fifty percent of the cost.
Now, the other thing we've talked about, Howard, is when you look, when you look at the total picture as far as a contribution from, say, the city of Platteville versus the surrounding watersheds, I mean, where is the data showing that the city should be responsible for putting these things in when around us, we have watersheds that have soil coming off the fields, and we have leaves falling and trees contributing nutrients, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? I mean, there's all kinds of nutrients going into the, to the Roundtree and the Wisconsin River, and the city is being asked to do this when I think that the total contribution is only relatively small as far as from the city.
I would agree that the city has a relatively small contribution. However, that is how the federal and state regulations mandate that cities are deemed better able to control their pollution versus non-point sources on, as you were discussing them. And so, because it's easier to, to control a point source, we get, we get the controls.
Or is it less politically difficult to control?
Well, it's that too.
That's part of it, possibly.
Way back in nineteen seventy, they started on controlling from sewage systems and point sources, and that's so easy to do because you just measure at the point sources versus trying to go out to a fields and measure what the contribution is from non-point. It's, besides a political nightmare, it's very difficult to do.
I would agree. It's not my purview to do that. We're here to, to assist you in making sure that we follow the regulations and permits that DNR sets forth.
You know, it's just easier to put a regulation on the city, as we mentioned here, than to put it on the non-point sources.
It's easier to put it on a city than it is to put it on a township. And, because it is non-point sources, and you know, all the time we hear this criticism about tax structure, and taxes are high, and I, I'm gonna live somewhere else 'cause taxes are high. Well, again, this is an unfunded mandate. We really don't have an option. It's not like we can just say no. It's like we have to do it. If we have to do it, we have to pay for it, especially if there's no assistance to pay for it.
What happens if we say no?
Now, I, I believe I, I suggested that when Howard said we got the congratulatory letter.
Yes.
It was a congratulatory letter. Congratulations. You have reached this milestone, and now you get to do stormwater management. I believe it was a congratulatory message. Is that right? Howard?
A, a little tongue-in-cheek on that, of course, but yes. Similar to congratulations that young people got during the Vietnam War, saying congratulations, please report to Uncle Sam for, for duty. Some people chose it to be congratulatory, and some chose it to be other forms of, of...
Communication.
Communication. But the, the bottom line is that we are required to do this. If we do not do what is in the permit, then we as a city can be fined on a daily basis for every day that we do not meet the requirements.
I wanna add too, I don't think it's a bad thing to regulate stormwater. I think it's a good thing. I'm frustrated, however, we're saying non-point. What is non-point? It's farms. Farms have to do very little to manage their stormwater runoff, and that's frustrating 'cause we're surrounded by agriculture. And here we are bearing a burden that's not being divided evenly among the creators. And that's the, that's the reality of the situation. I just wanna put it into plain English. Non-point is mostly agriculture, and they're not being regulated nearly as much as the city is on this one. That's very frustrating. We're bearing that cost for our whole surrounding communities.
Well, as I said before, it's agriculture and all the watershed. It's not a watershed, it's not agriculture, but it's contributing to pollution. It's natural pollution. Man, man, man's activities may be increasing the, the contribution.
It's dramatically increasing it, yeah. Yep.
I'm glad we all agree that we know what the problem is. It's not us. All right, we're going, going on, going on from there.
The idea that the cities are being slacked out to, to follow this.
Don't disagree with you, Kim. That's a policy issue. Yep, that is a policy issue.
Need to talk to our legislature.
That would probably be a good idea. All right, we're going on to bicycle routes. Howard?
Thank you. Okay. This is the second part of, of continuing actions for, for bike lanes and bike, bicycle routes and priorities. At, at our last meeting, the council approved installing bicycle lanes on Ridge Avenue to, as the first part of this process. One of the other items that came up was, can we get a overall comprehensive plan? And so, that's what we're bringing to you tonight, based on the work of the Community Safe Routes Committee. There is a copy of an overall map that you should have with zoomed-in maps of, of the different quadrants of the city. The idea here is that we have a dull or dark green that shows the current paved trails, trail system. You know, the, the MPO trail and some of the other spurs that we have. We have this bright green, or dark green, or whatever you wanna call it, that is a proposed trail from the dog park up to the skate park to, to try to join the MPO trail to the east end of Main Street. What we also have on this map are this, these orange sections. These orange sections are unpaved trail systems, you know, through the university and the spur that goes up through Mound View Park. The, the red dots are our schools, and the yellow are the proposed streets that we want to designate as bicycle routes. We've labeled the downtown area as red because that, in essence, is a bicycle route with the charros on there. Charros is one method of designating bicycle routes. Ridge Avenue is another way of doing it, having separate bike lanes. We will be, what we're saying is if you approve this as a concept, we want to go, the, the Safe Routes Committee wants to use the process that they used for Ridge Avenue, work with the homeowners, property owners on, on these streets, and try to identify the best method for accommodating bicycle traffic on those routes to get to and from our, our paved bike roads, bike routes, trails, and to and from the parks, the schools, and things like that. In some places, charros may be more appropriate. In other places, bicycle lanes may be more appropriate. And based on the guidance from last time, as you can see, we have Sylvia and Pitt Street on there, Fourth Street, Second Street listed on there, and those would be the next sets of streets that the Safe Routes Committee would be looking to work with those, that neighborhood to come up with the best way for bicycle routes.
Questions, anyone, or comments?
A comment or two. I assume just like at Ridge, you're gonna notify all the people on both sides of the street?
That is the intent. The, the Ridge Avenue model is the model that, that the Safe Routes Committee intends to use. Notifying people, establishing a public information meeting, going through the, the options and, and getting feedback from the community, the neighborhood.
So, both owners would be notified, and also renters living in houses?
As much as possible, yes.
Because renters would be affected too, because, for example, if they have vehicles, they may be parking on a cer, certain side of the street. So, that, again, you're gonna have to keep good records as far as who's been notified and what the response is from all these people. And who's gonna do that? The Safe Routes Committee?
That's the intent, yes.
So... Well, anyway, street parking is important to some residents, and so that will be interesting.
Any other questions or comments? All right, that's all we have on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.